The flag of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
Okay, how about the roll call? Matt Waldinger.
I am present.
Lisa Austin. Don Crenshaw.
Don is here. He's going between two meetings, so he is here.
Oh, okay. I'm here. Russ is not gonna be here. Uh, Jim Cardman. John Groh. Gene Miller.
Here.
Paul Pongratz. My farmer. No? Cindy Wells.
Here.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five. We do have a quorum.
Yeah, um, Lacy Letty, uh, I don't think you were on the call. Um, yeah, Lacy Letty is not able to attend. And then I will, um, I will let you know we have, um, Michael Orr joining us, um, from Elk Creek. And then.
She's always welcome.
Yeah, for sure. And then from my office, Laura Tashashni and Lynn Armel, who is our recycling and sustainability coordinator. And then, of course, our invited guests from Erie Management Group, um, Nick Bruno and Laura Gunshin. So, um, just to let you know.
Okay. Well, we welcome them people to our meeting. It's, uh, hopefully not too long when we have some things to discuss and I'm sure we can get them done. Okay, review and approval of the minutes from the last meeting. Has any, everybody read them that's listening? Or do you need a repeat?
No, this is Matt. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Okay, Matt. And, uh, second?
Uh, second.
Okay, Gene. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Approved. Thank you. Hearing of the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak at this time?
Charles, may I suggest, uh, we had originally put, uh, Erie Management Group and Prism Glass, uh, later on in the agenda. Um, I mean, you all are welcome to, to be with us through this thrilling meeting, for sure. But if you would prefer to, um, do your presentation. Yeah, and then get offline, um.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I would offer that. Can we do that?
Yeah, I think we can do that. I don't think we need any motion or anything for that, so I think we'd like to hear from them people.
Okay. Well, wonderful. So we'll transition to that then. Um, I have given screen sharing permissions. Um, so if, Nick, if you are in need of that, the floor is yours and Laura's and Lynn's, whomever.
Okay, fantastic. Well, thank you, uh, for having us and, and, uh, pleasure to meet everyone and we're, we're happy to, uh, present this to you this evening. Um, first off, my name's Nick Bruno. I'm Business Development Manager to Erie Management Group. Been here since about mid-September. And, uh, my colleague Laura, the Vice President of Program Development, she's on the line as well. So why don't we just start perhaps with Laura giving a, uh, you know, the quick elevator speech about EMG and, and, uh, what we're up to.
Sure, I can do that. Thanks, Nick. Thanks, everybody, for having us. As Nick mentioned, I'm Laura Gunshin. Been with Erie Management Group about four years now. Um, I do all project development and real estate development. Erie Management Group is an umbrella of companies um, under the tutelage of Samuel P. Black III, commonly known as Pat Black, and his daughter Sumi James Black. Our largest enterprise is Hero BX, uh, which is biodiesel. Our flagship facility is right here on the shores of Lake Erie, where we produce 50 million gallons a year. And at this point, that company has grown to five states, uh, not only in production facilities, but also blending and distribution. Hero BX is the largest biodiesel entity east of the Mississippi and the second largest in the country, now with all of our interests. More recently, we have entered into the medical marijuana space. Calypso Enterprises is our medical marijuana license. Um, also over here on the east side, we own, operate, and maintain all of the industrial acreage that was formerly Hammer Mill Paper and then International Paper, and have a number of development projects in the pipeline. Most recently, we have endeavored upon Prism Glass. Uh, Nick was recruited to EMG to spearhead Prism Glass, get that off the ground. Um, and we're very fortunate to be working with Lynn and Honey on a public-private partnership, also including the Erie Area Council of Governments and Capglass out of Mount Pleasant, Pennsylvania. And with that, I will turn it back over to Nick.
Okay. So, uh, yeah, as Laura mentioned, uh, I, I joined them in September to spearhead this project. And, uh, we are moving forward with the public-private partnership. And, and, uh, I'll, I'll reiterate that we're very pleased to be working with the county and the planning department and the recycling program and, and the council of governments. Uh, and so I'll just jump right into this. We've got about eight slides, so, uh, I'll just.
Sorry, do you mind if I introduce myself? I haven't, uh, met the, um.
Oh, absolutely. No problem.
Okay, cool. So, uh, my name's Lynn Armel. I am the Sustainability and Recycling Coordinator, um, with the Department of Planning. And, um, yeah, excited to be here and, um, virtually meet, uh, a lot of you for the first time. And also, um, to be, uh, part of this new initiative, um, with, uh, Erie Management Group and Prism Glass. All right, thanks, Nick.
Yep, great. Yeah, so Lynn, uh, is our main, uh, point of contact and coordinator on this project. And, uh, for the Erie Area Council of Governments, we're working with, uh, Jessica, uh, Haran Kunko. I believe I pronounced that correctly. And then, uh, as Laura mentioned, Capglass Recycling, that is the regional glass processor. Uh, that business, uh, has been operating now for about 32 years. They're one of the largest glass processors actually in the United States. And they produce what's called furnace-ready cullet as well as sand aggregate for DEP purposes, like sand mounds and such. And the majority of their glass, then, the cullet is that they produce is sold back to Owens, Illinois, or, uh, Ardoth Group for reprocessing into new glass bottles and jars in, uh, Port Allegheny, Pennsylvania. Uh, or, let's see, I, I, Crenshaw, Pennsylvania is where the other two plants are as well. So we're excited to be part of this project and to get glass out of the landfill stream and back into the supply chain for making new bottles and jars. Uh, the project itself, uh, we're running a six-month, uh, public-private partnership, um, that, uh, will begin in January 2021. We have 16 containers and it looks like, or I think we're, we've got 14 municipalities, uh, signed up for this, including the city of Erie. And we will be providing the drop-off containers and we'll manage all the hauling services and trucking to Capglass Recycling. It's gonna be free of charge. All municipalities participate, uh, and free to the public. There's no, no service fees throughout the pilot project. Possible locations, we're looking at spread out throughout the county. Obviously, this is more than 16. Uh, but like I said, we've got, uh, about 14 sites already committed. We're working on getting those last two. Uh, in fact, next week, I'll be speaking with the Washington Township Council about getting one out there. Uh, this is what the drop box looks like. It's, uh, basically, it's a, it's a mini roll-off. It's eight cubic yards, uh, steel construction. This is custom-made for this project out of, uh, Hadley, Pennsylvania, uh, by a company called Switch and Go, which is actually based in, in, uh, Sagertown. And the little insert you see there is the, is a small truck outfitted with the Switch and Go system. So the nice thing about this is that these trucks are not CDL. So they're smaller, they're nimble, they're, I think, uh, class of four or five trucks, up to 19,500 GBW. And they are good for smaller municipalities, city streets, things like that. So we'll be contracting the hauling service, uh, with a local, uh, operator of a Switch and Go system, uh, initially until we look to get our own system. So the, when we talk about responsibilities for participating, the municipalities, basically, it's very simple. Providing a location, flat hard surface, easily accessible. Uh, communicate the project to residents. We will be providing all of the informational material, all the, uh, leaflets and flyers and web-based material to them. And, uh, we just ask municipalities to note, to monitor the boxes, notify us when they're about three-quarters full to schedule pickup and then report any misuse of the boxes. And we would take care of all that misuse. There would be no extra fees or anything charged, like I said, to the municipalities. This is a pilot project. We'll be learning, the public will be learning. And the end goal is to basically develop a, uh, very efficient, cost-effective, uh, program to get as much waste glass out of the landfill stream back into the recycling stream. Other questions? Building off that last bullet point? Yes?
I've got a question. Does this have anything to do with the Novakosty recycling guy on, uh, East 12th Street?
So the recycling guy on East 12th Street, uh, that is, uh, Bayfront Glass. And actually, I was one of the, uh, co-founders and co-owners of that company. I sold my shares, uh, back to my partner, uh, earlier this year and then, uh, joined Bayfront Glass, uh, joined, uh, EMG here. So he's still operating.
So you'll, you'll be in competition with him?
Uh, in some ways, but the space is big enough that he can continue to do what he does. And he still has his relationship with, uh, the, uh, locations that he has. And he focuses on doing events and, uh, special pickups for people as well. So there's enough space, we think, in this, uh, in this arena that, that we can both operate and hopefully eventually collaborate together.
I could just add something to that real quick. I think it's important that we are two separate companies, yet to Nick's point, we've agreed to be colleagues in the space um, and to, and to kind of operate together, um, being that his focus is different. Ours is the public-private partnership at the municipal level and his is, um, drop-up and, drop-off, excuse me, and pop-up collections. So we're very similar, but we're very different by the same token.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. So, uh, in regards to misuse of, uh, of a, of a station or where there's broken glass and such, who's responsible? It's pretty much all of us. We'll be launching a public awareness campaign before, during, after the pilot to mitigate those. The design of the box itself, uh, hopefully will maybe mitigate some of those problems as well with larger access hatches. Uh, no color sorting required, so people can just dump and go. And we will work with municipalities. Sometimes it might just be an issue of where the box is located. So it might just be a relocation of the box. But nonetheless, like I said before, the, the six months will be a learning period for all of us involved. And we will intervene with, uh, additional, uh, pu- public education efforts through social media, uh, the news outlets, et cetera, to, to try to minimize any misuse of these containers. I live in Washington Township and, uh, I remember we had, uh, recycling, mixed recycling from waste management, but then that site got so abused that they had, they took it away. Uh, and so we don't want that to happen and we will intervene as much as possible to, to try to prevent that.
How many of the, how many of the boxes would you have in the city alone? Do you know?
Within the, within the city's, uh, territory, boundaries, there'll be four. And they'll be located in, uh, four of the public parks, spread, spread across the city.
For now.
So as of right now, there's no fees? You just bring the material and you guys are looking to, uh, profit off enough volume coming in to cover all the costs and, um, any expense that would be to the project?
Yeah, so let me move on to the next slide because that, that kind of happens, uh, the, the, the last question here is about what happens at the end of the pilot. So, uh, looking at frequency of pickup, it basically depends on how quickly a, a, a site fills. There might be some sites that fill up quicker than others. Uh, and that's why the communication's important as well between where this, where the box is located and us. Uh, types of glass we'll accept. It's, it's basically food and beverage containers, candle jars and perfume and cologne bottles. So just think bottles and jars. Any other type of glass, it's a different type of glass that, uh, cannot get into the, the, what's called the bottle-to-bottle recycling stream. So we'll have that all clearly spelled out in the handout material as well as on the containers themselves. Now, to get to your question, sir, uh, what happens after the pilot? Uh, one is, is that municipalities that wish to continue can do so for another six months free of charge. So it's one full year of no service fees for this program. The, after that, we will have, we'll be collecting numbers all along the way. And we still need to, to, to work out the details of this, but we'll be reporting those numbers back to the, um, to the county, to, to Lynn and to Honey, as well as, uh, the volumes collected from each municipality. And then they in turn can use that, that, that data, uh, for these 904 recycling performance grant funds, which they get money back. And some of that, uh, some or all of it could cover the full cost for these programs. So these are things we have to work out and understand, uh, from a volume perspective. And then, uh, uh, just how much, uh, grant funding would be available through those performance grants. Likewise, we're gonna be rolling out a couple of other paid services that should be able to cover the costs of this, even if we have to subsidize the drop-off. That's not, not gonna be a problem.
Is that funding from the state?
Uh, the 904 recycling performance grants, yes. It's, it's from the Department of Environmental Protection.
Yeah, so essentially, uh, municipality will get paid about, um, $5 a ton for specific, um, recyclable items, I guess. So glass is one of those. Um, so they would report that, um, through me to the state and then they'd be eligible to apply for a grant for $5 a ton, which could be specifically allocated to, um, to glass recycling in the future, um, if that's what they wanted to do.
So, I might understand the first year is a full pilot program based on the data that tracks the quantity. So let's just say at the end of the year, we show that there was a thousand ton of glass that came in. Then there's an application will be sent into the state showing that the, uh, county, Erie County, saved a thousand ton of material going to the landfill. And then the application will be submitted in. And if the application is funded, there would be a grant that would be given that would offset that prior year's expense or the years going forward expense to re, to duplicate or redo the, the, uh, pilot program or in that case, a program.
Uh, yes. Um, and as long as they, as long as it's reported correctly, which, um, I will make sure to do that, uh, then it's, it's a guaranteed amount. Um, uh, with the exception, or with the understanding that the recycling fund isn't, um, reduced on a state level. Which is something, uh, we're all kind of monitoring pretty closely, uh, the special funds and various things at the state level that, given the giant budget deficits that we're seeing, um, all of the different funds are being looked at and scrutinized and considered, uh, for budget, filling budget holes. Um, so I imagine this is.
Is there an ex, is there some kind of exclusivity agreement or something to protect EMG? If they're bearing all the costs the first year and there's no recapture, they're totally at the dependency of a grant to follow. And what would stop someone else from competing, uh, those following years after they've absorbed, maybe it's made money, but all those initial costs?
Nick, I can take one.
Yeah, you wanna take that, Laura?
Yeah, sure. Tony, to your question, this is not designed to be a moneymaker for EMG. This is designed to get glass out of the landfill. And Nick and I have had this question or this conversation with a lot of people that we are, we have the ability and we're willing to frontside this as long as we need to because it's the right thing to do. And then I think as we get out into the community and people see how easy it is, it becomes easier for them than when we do offer curbside. And when you are willing to pay $10 a month for a container at your house, that's when we're gonna start to make our money. Curbside and then commercial bars and restaurants. So the municipal-public-private partnership was never designed to make money. As long as we need to subsidize it, we will do that because it, it really is the right thing to do. And we will have, hopefully, tens of thousands of pounds of glass, tons of glass. There's a lot of glass that goes into the landfill right now. And like I said earlier, the easier we make this for people, the more apt they are to participate. Um, another gentleman on the call asked about the locations in the city and I said, "For now." I mean, the, the mayor and his administration have been remarkable in getting, uh, out as an early adopter and saying, "You can have these four," excuse me, "you can have these four locations right away." I do think when people start to use them, then we'll, you know, we'll further those conversations and have additional locations. We didn't know if we were gonna be able to fill the first 16 boxes and they're all filled. And we're talking about the next order. And those will quick, quickly become filled, especially after the holiday time when people realize that they, they have somewhere to take their glass. So I know that's a long answer to a short question, but hopefully, um, you, you gain as much information as you need as we continue to talk. But we really do feel that this is the beginning of a much larger conversation about glass recycling in this community.
I want to applaud you guys for the efforts that you're making upfront and initially. And I agree with you. As a childhood and growing up into, in the refuge business and still playing in it somewhat as lo, as well as the recycle, I understand, uh, what you're saying. And ultimately, to reduce whatever costs is going into our landfill is definitely a great thing. And as my father says always, the one thing that you can assure, there's always gonna be waste material as long as you're making stuff, that, uh, you know, ultimately, whatever we can save by not taking into our landfills and recycle, it, it definitely makes it, uh, a better community. So, uh, I applaud you guys for the, for the effort. And hopefully, the best thing we can do is have it built so, so large and everybody's recycling. You know, one of my, my tenants from another country came in and told me, you know, "This is the only country we know where we walk in and walk down the street and pick up money," as in aluminum cans from a recycle and it's got value, to ultimately, I could see the glasses and the people are recycling, uh, that it gets to the point that there is a value that, uh, not only is it saving our landfills, but it's something that's, uh, economically, uh, profitable to the point that people even want to go out and do it and collect and even minimize even more so. That, that goes into the landfill. So you guys are doing a good job.
Thanks, we appreciate that very much. We appreciate your support.
How, 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 how can this organization, the Planning Commission, have anything to do or help you?
I'm, uh, you know, this is Nick again. And, um, yeah, you know, uh, really, it's about promotion at this point. So once it's launched, uh, it's about promoting, um, you know, driving by. If, if you drive by a, a, a container, you know, take a look at it, take a slower look at it and see if, see if there's any, you know, boxes or any other trash around it. Notify us if you see anything. You know, promoting to friends and family. It's really about the social, uh, the social aspect of this, uh, and getting the words, the word spread. Um, you know, glass recycling, I, I, I'm old enough to remember, remember returnable bottles, uh, you know, when I was a kid growing up. And then the switch to, to non-returnables. And, uh, I, over this last year that I've been working in this, or almost two years now, actually, um, I've had a lot of communication with the industry. In fact, today, we were on a, on a conference call with the, uh, Glass Recycling Foundation and the Glass Packaging Institute. And the industry recognizes that this is a needed thing. The, these, these smaller level, uh, projects and programs and systems for smaller counties like Erie County and Crawford County and such that don't have programs. And so the other thing about this project is it serves to become a, really a, a model, a best practice for our size communities throughout the country. So as much as we can promote it and, and really make it successful, that's how, that's how we see at this point that, um, that the commission could, could, could help.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Uh, is there anything else to be said?
Charles, I have a couple of things. Um, Nick, would you be willing to, uh, share your slides with me? Charles, I, um, we can copy those and send those to you so you can see, um, what Nick was presenting, if you're interested. Um, we can, we can do that for you.
Yeah, I can send you a PDF. That's not a problem.
Okay, yeah, that would be lovely. And then just a selfish question. Uh, I live in Lawrence Park. Did Lawrence Park sign on for one of these? I'd love to be able to just walk down with my glass and.
Sure. We, uh, I, I spoke with Jessica, it was either yesterday or today, and she is, is working on Lawrence Park. I, I think there was some illness in the, uh, municipal building, so.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yep, yep. So she, they're, they're on the list and, and we're waiting for confirmation.
Great, fantastic.
And until then, honey. Well, go ahead, Laura. You are welcome to use the containers we have at SB3.
Oh, fantastic, yeah. When I drive by, I'll, I'll, I'll go to the office.
Swing in, use the container, not a problem.
Glad to do it. I do love Lawrence Park for being able to walk to the coffee shop and the diner and the library and when the township building is open and safe to the township building. So, but I also, yeah. I'll definitely take you up on the SB3 offer as well.
Okay. Super.
Thank you all so much.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody, for your time.
Yeah, just a moment. Nick, I've got a question.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand it was supposed to be one at West County. It was supposed to be up by the, um, oh, West County Paramedic Building. Do you know anything about that?
So this is also, I'm, I'm waiting for some confirmation from, uh, Gerard Township.
Okay, from Wendy, okay.
Yeah, I know Gerard Borough and Gerard Township are, have confirmed, but we're waiting to confirm the locations.
That's what we're waiting for right now.
Yep, so, but, but they've, they've confirmed their participation. It's a matter of just identifying the location.
Okay, fine.
Yep, and we'll, we'll be publishing, uh, those locations, uh, probably, you know, a few days before the containers are distributed.
Okay.
And they'll be, they'll be on a website. There'll be an interactive map as well that people can go to and, and, you know, click on the little waypoint and see where it's located and such.
Right. Okay, fine, thanks.
Okay, you're welcome. Any other questions?
I don't think so. So thank you very much. Uh, it was a very interesting, uh, conversation.
Okay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye-bye.
You're welcome to stay, but do not feel obligated, you.
My wife wants me to come home.
I'm sure, yes, yeah, absolutely. Well, have a great evening. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Okay, moving on. Is there anybody else that wants to speak for the public? Being done, we will move on to communications. Department of Planning Development Report.
Sure, I have very little, uh, this evening. Just a couple of things. Um, so that I know I talk, I've been talking about Um, so that I know I've been talking about the agricultural preservation program a lot lately, but it's just that season for us. Um, the ag program is beginning a new preservation process for three new farms. One is in Northeast Township, one is in Springfield Township and one is in Gerard Township. So um, this is just starting, this is kind of the preliminary work um, on that. But we, we wrapped up those, those other farms, got them into the program and now we're starting the process with three new farms in the county. Um, in your meeting materials, I did include a press release that had been put out um, from John McGriner regarding the program, just to give you some insight. And I also included some maps per your request at the last meeting. And then uh, another point of interest, uh, particularly for those of you that are on the eastern portion of the county. Uh, last week, we had a meeting, oh gosh, it was so amazingly well attended. We had almost sixty people on a Zoom call, that was very interesting to facilitate. And it was regarding uh, the priority of the Erie County, um, well, the county executive. Uh, to realign the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail, so it fully goes through Erie County. So the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail now comes into Erie County into Quarry. And then it heads off through Western New York and eventually makes its way back into the county along Route Five. And prior to COVID, when uh, the directors got together with the county executive and um, we were talking about her administrative priorities. One of the things that she identified was having the trail fully come through Erie County. So coming into Quarry and then heading maybe uh, to Union City up through Waterford. That route is to be determined, but we'd like to see kind of a south to north connection um, through the county for that. So we had a meeting last week with a whole host of people representing a whole host of groups, municipalities. Uh, in the county to talk about beginning that endeavor. Because while Erie County Planning and Community Development can support that effort and assist in that effort. We can't necessarily lead that effort, we need community champions um, to really be leading the effort. And so that was uh, the initial meeting last week. So our next step with that is, um, we'll be sending out the, the notes that we took at that meeting and asking each group that was in attendance to pick, pick one person. Um, from their organization, um, to kind of be a part of a core group to help identify. Who are going to be the community champions that we support in getting this done. And this, this is a, this is a long distance bike ride, this is not going to happen. Um, it's going to take us many, many years. Uh, we need to first do a feasibility study to see which route would make sense through the community. And then there's a whole host of other things, um, that would need to happen with landowners and municipalities. To bring the trail to fruition, um, but it's an exciting endeavor, we're pleased to be a part of it. Um, but it's, this is going to be years in the making. Um, but if you remember back, oh gosh, um, earlier this year. Uh, you all pa- approved, recommended the Erie County Parks Trails and Recreation Plan. And this is one of the items that are identified in that plan is to, to realign the Erie to Pittsburgh Trail. So um, even in COVID times, we are still working on these types of things, but I just wanted to share that with you. And that's all that I have for my report.
Okay, I thank you, that's very informative. Is there any uh, commissioner reports? Being none, we'll move on, the whole business is still tabled, the administrative code?
Yes, yes, um, I know that they uh, have it. I do not believe that it's been approved yet and they do, the county council does not have any additional meetings for this year. They'll reconvene in um, mid-January, they have one meeting in January. So as soon as it's adopted, um, we'll put a plan in place to bring a group of people together from this body to um. Align our bylaws with the administrative code and uh, if we need to take it to council, then we'll, we'll go through that process.
Okay, how about uh, planning for 2021, is there anything different coming up?
Yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about that, um, taking the information and ideas that you all shared last uh, month with me. Um, I am working with my whole team to bring um, one or a few of them in at each meeting throughout next year. So that they can provide briefings to you about what it is they do and what it is that they're doing. Um, we had originally intended to have an open house with you all, however, um. We'll do that once the threat of COVID has passed. So in the meantime and likely through the entirety of next year, at each meeting, um, team, team members from planning and community development. Will be coming in for an overview of their program area and kind of the high-level projects that are happening. And we'll schedule uh, other special presentations as needed, such as sessions on CPACE, which is Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy. We're currently working on a resolution for council to approve, we'll present that resolution to them in January. And then we're also working on an economic land use analysis, so we'll, when those types of things are complete, we'll uh, do some short presentations for you all. Conversely, um, I would love to see, and I think it would be helpful for members of the planning commission. Just to have a better understanding of what is happening, not just in our department, but from across the county. If you all, um, if you could, um. And I haven't quite thought through this and maybe you all have some ideas on how this might work. Maybe it's touching base with your county council member or other um, people in your world, in your districts. But I would love to have a report uh, from you all at each meeting. It doesn't need to be long and lengthy, um, it could be just very high-level things about what is happening in your particular, particular district that you represent. Once again, I think it might be useful for the entire planning commission just to be clued in on what's happening across the county. So that's a suggestion, um, I'm glad to open that up for debate now or touch on a few other items and talk about that at the end.
Well, is there anybody that would uh, like to discuss some of them, planning uh, agenda that uh, she, honey, had on the uh, list?
Uh, this is Matt, I just, I'd just like to say, I think, oh, thanks Jeannie, sorry. I just want to say I think it's a good idea, I know in the past we have had, you know, short reports from each commissioner. Uh, I, I don't think it's a bad thing, I think it's probably a good idea that we prepare and um, just a little something for every meeting. Uh, just kind of share what's going in, in our corner of the county at least. But uh, you know, I, I, I'm, I support those ideas, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've, we've had that before, uh, with, with people from each section giving uh, telling us what's going on. Whether they got salt and wh- whether their farms are doing well, you know, and that's good information because at least we all are Erie Countyans and we should know what's going on in our county. So if there's anybody that uh, wants to uh, speak about anything in their district, they're, they're welcome to do it, that's all they gotta do is pipe up. So is there anybody else that would like to speak up besides me?
The only thing, honey, I'm asking is, because like Matt would have Mill Creek Township, okay? What I'm asking is, are you, you know, say I would have Gerard and our Gerard Township, is that what you're looking for is for that area in West County?
Yeah, so each of you, yeah, each of you represent um, a different district. Uh, some of you, some of your districts that you represent, you do have multiple municipalities. Um, however, I do know that you all talk and kind of are aware of what's happening. And once again, this is not meant to be kind of an in-the-weeds type of thing, just a kind of a high-level overview of. Yeah, these are the things that are happening in West County, these are the things that are happening um, in South County. That's kind of what I'm, I'm endeavoring to do, you know, what's happening in the city.
Something that's knowledgeable to all of us, I guess, would help.
Yeah, 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 so if it would help, um, I'm glad to send out the, the map of the, the county that kind of. With it shows the council district, so you can maybe get a better sense of what it is encompassed within your district. And, and I think we'll have to, yeah, that might actually help because District Two, Three and Four, um, you're all the city of Erie. Uh, so maybe figure out, maybe you could split it, right? Um, you don't, you could rotate in the meetings, I'm, I'm open to suggestions, I am not. I believe there's more ways than one way to do things and, and so however you all want to handle that, so it is easiest for you all, then um.
Well, honey.
Basically saying have at it.
Honey, many years ago, we did have a map of, of the areas that were represented. And uh, of course, we had a lot of more people coming in from some of those areas just to come in and speak into, you know, as a, like hearing of the public, which was good. Uh, because we got a lot of information from people that uh, normally you don't get, you know what I mean? Everybody has a different opinion out in the, out in their, in their districts and it's good that they come up with something different and, and relay it. And uh, maybe there's something we could do about it or help them. I don't know how that would work, but uh, it's a good suggestion to get a map of uh, the districts and, and some of those people living in. And when those districts might want to talk to the representative, like uh, Jeannie from uh, Gerard or, or uh, Tim from Fairview or even city of Erie people. So there's a, a, a good uh, part of that that I like, that uh, distributes the, distributes the uh, the knowledge and the uh, and the uh, uh, what's going on in the area.
Great, well, we'll get those things to you then, we'll, we'll figure it out, right?
Yeah, when did you want to start this though, honey?
Um, it would, so our next meeting, uh, if you recall from our bylaws, we do not meet in January or July. So our next meeting, I believe, is February eleventh, it would be ideal, um, I think to, to start then and, and see what happens. Um, you know, we can, we can tie it up as, as we go along.
How much time do we, how much time do we get?
An hour and a half.
Once again, high, high-level overview, um, I think it just depends, right? Some, there might be times of the year where things are really hopping in your particular district and other times where they're not. Um, I, I guess maybe let's see what happens.
That's why.
See that like, things are going on and on, then we can put a time limit on it, but um, I don't know.
I'm just kidding, just kidding.
Great, well, there's a few other, few other things I wanted to mention, once again, based off of the ideas that you all shared last month. Um, Laura Tashashne is with us this evening, um, and will be helping with the planning commission. I'm gonna have her um, gather info on the Pennsylvania chapter of the American Planning Association. And registering eligible members of this commission for that, um, so that we can take advantage of, advantage of some of their learning opportunities. So that's gonna be, um, stay tuned, we'll, as we get that information, we'll obviously get in touch with you all and connect you all. Um, to that opportunity and then uh, also going to have Laura research and work with Jessica Heran Kunsow, whose name was mentioned earlier this evening. She is the executive director of the Council of Governments and in the past, she has brought um, planning commission type training and courses. Um, to the members of the COG and I briefly have spoken to her about kind of collaborating on those efforts, right? Because the, often the more uh, people you have in seats, uh, the less the cost is to do that. So um, we're gonna explore what's even out there. I know that um, PMPI is, they're struggling to bring their stuff online. Because they really try and tailor it to the area in which they're doing the training. Um, and so uh, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what will be available, what we're going to look into it and we'll keep you updated. Um, and then, once again, having Laura uh, help work on a collection of materials. Related to kind of what you need um, as a planning commission member, like the maps of the districts, um, the administrative code probably for the county perhaps. There's not a ton in there on the planning commission actually, um, other things like that, that it would be helpful for you as a planning commission, commission member to have those types of materials. And that, I don't know, I was thinking about you and your planning commission, if you have kind of a, um, a binder for your commission members. And we can, we can talk about this now or we can talk about it offline, but I've been wanting to, since I've kind of come into this role, put something together. So as planning commission members, you kind of know all the expectations along with kind of supplemental information that would be helpful to your role as a commission member. So that's where my head is with what you shared with me last week or last month.
Um, real quick, honey, I don't, and I don't want to bog it down, we do have kind of a, a binder and some things that we give out to new members. Um, it's kind of appropriate you brought it up because we do have an opening in our commission and so I've been thinking about updating some of that material. But maybe I'll talk to you offline and I can share with you some of what we give out. Um, and mostly it's our ordinances and things, but there are some guidelines. One big thing I think that would be good for everybody here would be a copy of the municipality's planning code. Um, if you're including some materials, you know, to have a copy of the MPC would be good, but we can, we can talk offline.
It's gonna be the first thing in the binder. Yeah, absolutely, wonderful, thank you, Matt. So yeah, once again, just kind of a response to um, our brainstorming session last month, I just wanted to follow up on, on some of those things.
Okay, that's pretty impressive, uh, is there anything else that we want to discuss? Being nothing, I uh, want uh, everybody to have a happy holiday and a, a meager Christmas, even though, you know, it's uh, this COVID thing. But uh, we've got to uh, we've got to get through it somehow and, and good health and I hope we don't lose anybody during, during this thing. Because it's, it's so contagious, it's ridiculous, you know, I mean, I, I can't understand why we can't, couldn't have found out something quicker about this thing and got it in check. But that's not up to me or, or this board. And uh, with that, I wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays and a happy new year and happy, happy. So with that, I'm gonna call for adjournment, adjournment. Do I have a motion?
Should we take a, yep, motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to adjourn it and echo uh, Charles' sentiment, happy holidays, everybody, I hope you all have a safe and happy one.
I'll second that motion and likewise.
Okay, all in favor?
Bye.
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 Again.
Night everyone, thank you, happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, honey.
Same.
Take care, guys, y'all.
Bye, everybody.
Bye everyone.
Bye-bye.